The Irish calendar.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Abington Board of Selectmen, would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, first on the agenda, Kevin Donovan, update on the status of the development of the former naval air station.
Chairman, if I could, just for the purpose of the state ethics law, I'll be stepping down as selectman and speaking to you as chief executive officer of South Shore Tri-Town. Any comments I make, so my position is at Tri-Town and not reflective of my position as a selectman. So, I'd ask Jim Laven, who's a member of the Board of Directors, to join me.
Good evening. And thanks for having us back. We've been here a couple of times in the past, and we always said, when you want to hear from us, give us a buzz and we'll be down. So, we're happy to be back here again to give you an update. A lot has happened over the last few years. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things, and Kevin will take over the show after that. I brought most empty papers, Kenny, so don't worry about it, it's not going to be that long. Just to let you know that in 1998 is when the Development Corporation, South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation, started business. And with that, there were two directors from Rockland, two directors from Waymouth, and one director from Abington. I'm the director from Abington. The other two were John Ward from Rockland and Jerry Aramo from Rockland. And we had Jim, it's not Jim Conley, it's Joe Conley from Waymouth and Jeff Wall from Waymouth. So, those are the five people that make up of the board. And Kevin, Chief Executive Officer. Over the past year, and I think that's a good timeline on it, is when business really got going down the base and everything was starting to churn and come together, and development was happening, and there were land sales. Since then, that happened, proud to report that Abington has received or will be receiving That will be coming out of land sales. That's how, when I does land sales, they have to pay us based upon a formula, and Waymouth gets paid based upon a formula, and Rockland gets paid based upon a formula. And roughly, it's 50, 40, 10, we'd be in town, but I think for some it's just close to 12, 48. But it's always round. So, I'm very happy that we're able to do that. And there has been concern over the years of what's going to happen, are you going to overload it with people? Well, when we did the reuse plan, we indicated, we're going to try to keep it to a certain number of residents living there. And we're still tracking that number, 7,827 will be the number of residents, we hope, when the place is finally developed out. And we kept the mandate that the people wanted us to abide by. And that's, to me, the important part, and Kevin has, he has a sheet of paper with about eight or nine points on it. He'll be happy to go over that. And at the end, be happy with Kevin to address any concerns or questions that you might have, and we can get the answers there, too. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. It should be important to point out, Jim was the original director that was appointed from the town of Abington, so he's been on the board since 1998 and has done an exemplary job. Primarily, the update considers, a lot has happened, as Jim has indicated, in the past couple of years, actually. We were able, we were successful in negotiating with the Commonwealth to get the state to come up with a bond for $30 million that would go towards the construction of the East-West Parkway. And that will connect Waymouth Street in Rockland to Shea Memorial Drive on the base. Eventually, the idea is to put the Parkway onto Route 18. But right now, with the state's commitment of a $30 million bond, we were able to go out, and in two phases, Tri-Town was able to secure a contract with Biola Construction for a portion of the base that would go from Waymouth Street into about the middle of the base. And then the state was picking up another portion that would go from the middle of the base to Shea Memorial Drive, which would include taking down the hangar. In Rockland, the Parkway is under construction now, it's hopefully to be completed in September of next year. Part of the parcel in Rockland is the Smith Medical Laboratory, that the building itself has to be bifacated and taken down. So that we're in the throes of, you know, finishing that. We're hopeful, because of the construction within that building, a retaining wall is going to have to be built before they take the other portion of the building down. So, as soon as that's down, you'll see quite a pronounced construction effort in there. If you go on the inside of the base, the Parkway, we've made great strides in that. In addition, we were able to secure a $12.5 million bond that was able to pay LNR, our master developer, back for construction of the infrastructure that's already in place. As you'll note, there are a number of townhouses and single-family homes that are currently under construction. In fact, we have about 10 occupied now. We have a 226-unit apartment building being completed by, that's being built by Cochrane Development, that the initial occupancy will take place in March of next year. So, with that, the total townhouses, there's going to be 14 townhouses and 12 single-family homes constructed by Whitman Homes, and 34 townhouses by the Interactive Building Group. Of that, 16 townhouses, townhomes have been completed, and five single-family homes are currently completed. There's also plans, we permitted a 216 senior apartments by Rogers and Eventide, of which 30% of those units will be affordable, which will also be inclusive of 46-bed skilled nursing facility. The, I'm happy to report that the negotiations with the Navy have finally come to an end. After 13 long and arduous years, we finally made an agreement with the Navy for the transfer of the remaining portion of the base, which is about 836 acres. We signed, we met at the Pentagon, we've had intense negotiations back and forth. We went, initial meeting at the Pentagon in July, we had continued negotiations. We signed a purchase and sale November 15th, and we're, I'm happy to report that this Thursday, we'll actually be passing papers, so that all the remaining land will be in our control. Of the 836 acres, about 124 of that is being carved out, that the Navy will retain actual ownership of, to finish the environmental cleanup on. And the big concern of everybody, including South Shore Tri-Town, and our position was and always will be, that the environmental cleanup was paramount. And with that, Navy wanted to give us the land and say that, you know, that they tried to indicate that they were going to still do the cleanup, but we were insistent upon that the land would remain under their control while the cleanup went. They will give us a license to the land, so if we do have to construct the Parkway over portions of it, you know, we'd be able to do that. But it's important to note that the cleanup is under the direct supervision of the Environmental Protection Association, Environmental Protection Agency, and the State Department of Environmental Protection. So, the two federal and state regulatory authorities that are charged with the public health and the public safety are the ones that have oversight over this. So, any cause for concern, you know, should be abated in that the regulatory agencies have a direct impact. In fact, they were very instrumental at the negotiating table. We had asked them to come to the table with the Navy, and they were very helpful in furthering the process along in terms of the environmental cleanup. So, you know, we're very happy with that. The deal with the final transfer will culminate in a $25 million price tag that'll be paid by LNR, $2 million at the closing on this Thursday, $10 million over a period of 10 years, a million dollars a year tied to the Treasury Index, and the remaining amount, about $13 million tied to 5.04% of sale. So that the Navy has a stake. Essentially, they're, they're underwriting it, if you will, they're taking the risk, so that they're not guaranteed the last portion. If the development does well over time, the Navy will benefit. If it doesn't, it's an unsecured loan. So, we're able to negotiate those favorable terms. Originally, when the Navy first, just before I came on board, the Navy had wanted and headed appraised at a price tag of $43 million. Because of the economic conditions, the way we were, we were insistent that the land be reappraised. Way back in time, there was a question that the land, under an economic development transfer, would be free if you provided jobs. That was under the Clinton administration. And the Bush administration, they, and again, because of the economy, the federal government switched their policy and said they wanted to have some payment for the land, you know, if it was developed. So, again, we were able to renegotiate the price from $43 million down to $25 million, and then favorable terms over a period of time to make it work. So that, again, I'm very happy that we're going to be able to culminate, you know, that deal on this coming Thursday. Of the land that's going to be conveyed, 556 acres will be for the economic development, which would be for the construction of homes and commercial and retail space. As indicated, 124 acres will be held out by the Navy for environmental cleanup, and 154.96 acres will be for a public benefit conveyance, which is essentially conservation land or trails and walking paths. So, it fits in very nicely with the reuse plan that was adopted by the three communities of Abington, Rockland, and Waymouth, and we're adhering to the overall reuse plan. Jim had mentioned the host community payments totaled for Abington, that totals to date what has been paid, and obviously, there's, that host community agreement is an agreement between the town and the master developer. Tri-Town itself is not part of that. And just to give you an idea of the structure of Tri-Town, when I came on board, we were in the throes, the last throes of being a redevelopment agency. My charge was essentially to form a government, that we had to start from the ground up. We had to write a tax plan, we had to have all the parcels assessed, we had to get approval of the tax rate, which we did. We've established a tax rate back in FY09 and moving forward. So, we've slowly been building the government, which is very intriguing to me, having been a town administrator for 15 years, you're usually plopped in a community, and you inherit all the problems that come with it, and your infrastructure is in place. Very unique to start and build something from the ground up. So, you get to create your own problems and not deal with anybody else's. So, with that, we've been making grand strides. You know, we're hopeful as the, with the final conveyance, that the construction will continue. You know, the big issues, obviously, it's been based on a phased-in approach, so that as the construction on goes, we can't go to the next phases until certain parameters are met. Chief among them is the completion of the East-West Parkway. So that the traffic issues, you know, have all been studied out, they've been issued in the environmental impact reports, and there is regulatory oversight in regards to that. That's sort of it in a nutshell, you know, in terms of where we've been and where we're going. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to answer it, you know, from that standpoint.
Kenny?
There was an affordable housing lottery, is that true?
That is actually tomorrow night.
Now, will there be other ones in the future, too?
Yes.
Okay. And the other question is, I was reading somewhere that the town of Abington will receive total payments of $2 million, is that correct?
Yeah, well, over time, there's two components. One, again, your host community agreement, which is not with us, it's with the master developer, based on the projections that are out there, yes, I think it's 1.9 something and change, when all's said and done. Eventually, down the line, the way the legislation reads, is once Tri-Town has met all its obligations, debt service and otherwise, the whole idea of us being established was the fact that any excess revenues would then be apportioned back to the three host communities. You know, the general question, the first question, I know back when we started it in 1998, is when? I know when I sat there, when we were originally talking about that, that was our chief concern. It was difficult back then, because you were looking into a crystal ball and trying to hypothesize. Since that point, you know, we do have our primary concern right now is debt service. We're hopeful that within the next couple of fiscal years, if everything goes okay, we may be in a position to give some sort of a projection as a relation to that. But our primary concern right now, we do have agreements in place, that in order to get the state to appropriate the $30 million, it was on the basis that it's what they call an I-cubed-like appropriation, meaning that the investment of $30 million has to ensure that the new net state revenues as a result of that, that the Parkway going in, that the state would realize the debt and interest payments to secure the bond. If those new net state revenues are not realized, then we have to, based on a complex formula, assess, you know, to the property owners, the balance of that. So, the first year, we're finding ourselves, and that's the problem we're having right now with setting the tax rate, we're almost at completion on that, is getting certified by Department of Revenue of what the actual deficit is in the first year. Second year, we don't feel as though it should be too much of an issue, because by that point, your, your construction jobs, your sales taxes realized from, you know, the purchase of goods and services, will be enough to sustain those bond payments. So, I guess that's the crux of it.
Mike?
If I remember correctly, you said that the Parkway was going to be completed, but only in the middle of the base?
Right.
My question would be, what's it going to take, or what do you feel, I think there's a lot of interest in having it come out through a team?
There is, and it has to, actually. The, in order to get this phase completed, we had to, had to show connectivity from, you know, the east to the west, from Rockland to Waymouth. The second portion of our task will be to wait upon Congress and ask them for an appropriation. We've got estimates, you know, and again, the construction being what it is, it's only a guesstimate, but if we were to ask for an appropriation, we're looking at another perhaps $40 million, because we'd have to go over the railroad tracks to connect Route 18. The problem with that right now is Congress took a different tact in regards to earmarks. We've been very successful dealing with the congressional delegation in the past of getting earmarks for the base. Senator Kennedy was, was successful in getting an $8 million earmark, and we were working on the widening of Route 18 as well, you know, in that vein. With that said, we're, there's a whole debate in Congress right now as to whether they would give the states the old block grant type, we will give, you know, a block grant to the state. Well, in some respects, I think we would prefer that, because we have a very good working relationship with the state administration, and this is a priority, so that we would find ourselves in a priority status. The second point is, what I've maintained, is that when we get involved into the infrastructure, dealing with water and sewer, and anything to deal with services, that I want to make sure that the three communities benefit. That was the whole idea of why Tri-Town was established. Specifically, on the water and sewer, we're looking at, Waymouth has a defined problem in terms of, you know, trying to service the entire base. They have the capacity, but there's some resistance, you know, from internally. Abington and Rockland does have sufficient capacity, but they don't have the permitting. We've, we've explored the idea, we've commissioned an engineer to give us a report to what is the feasibility. If we were to go split the base and do a 60/40 split, if Abington and Rockland Joint Water Works was able to supply us with 60% of the water, and the town of Waymouth 40%, we would entertain and help them with any infrastructure enhancement. So, specifically, on, right now, the Joint Water Works, in my estimation, we would look at bringing in a loop system from Higgins Street to Union Street, and so that you have a complete loop system on the base. One thing, what we were successful in helping Rockland out, is to get them a half a million dollar grant that would begin the process. Now, when I had mentioned to you that Smith's Medical Lab is being taken down by, there was a property taken by eminent domain, that property was taken off the tax rolls for the town of Rockland. Rockland was going to lose in that regard. They had a couple of landlocked parcels in there that are owned by the Spence family that they want to develop. By putting the Parkway in, that now opened up the Spence family land. In order to help the base, if we brought in the 12-inch main, it would allow Rockland the opportunity to develop the Spence land, thereby to put that development land on the tax parcels for Rockland that they lost for the Smith Medical Lab, and in turn, the base would, would benefit by that. In addition, if we were to utilize the Rockland sewer plant for our sewer, you know, overflow as part of North Abington goes to Rockland, that part of the plant would have to be upgraded. And I think we would be looking at, you know, participating in that as well. So that, and on the Waymouth side, Waymouth has issues on their Mount Comm going out to Deer Island, some infrastructure that needs to be increased. So, the whole idea of this was to benefit all three communities, and I think that's what we want to look at. If we can utilize the services, if the services are there, we want to be able to ease some of that burden, you know, from an infrastructure cost standpoint, and be able to help out in that regard. And as the process continues, there'll be other issues coming down the line, you know, in terms of, of, you know, the way that perhaps we can help out. Primarily, one of the questions that's asked of us is, what about schoolchildren? Well, under our legislation, all children that are located on the base, regardless of which geographical bounds that they're in, go to the Waymouth public school systems, and we're responsible in total for their educational costs. So, we're working right now with the mayor, you know, on, they have an issue with a middle school that, you know, where we want to work with the Waymouth School Committee and the mayor in regards to that, as to how that plays out, and, you know, we'll see how that envelops. So, I know that's a lot, and I've thrown a lot at you, but if you have any questions, or given, you know, in the point of time, if you have any questions, I welcome you all to come over. Many of you have already been over, you know, what, see the development, you know, we'd be happy to come back periodically and give a status update report.
On the water, I want to be depending, I can see, you know, increasing gas, you had a water laboratory, so to speak, I know that increased aside, you can see we have extra capacity. And I did see, I think, that a little highly redorses the town of Rockland being able to develop, and able to add lots. But as far as when the pipe goes on to the base and the sale of that water goes, how would that, how would that affect the residents of Abington, Rockland, or Rockland, so I mean, I would hope there would be, you know, some, looking at, would we sell you water?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wasn't water power existing on that base, is that?
Yeah, but it, it, nothing to the capacity that would sufficiently be able to supply it. The, yes, to answer your question, we would be purchasing water, and the question would be at the rates available. I mean, all along, the idea, or at least in talking to the water commissioners and the superintendent, that any properties within the geographical bounds of the towns of Abington and Rockland, they felt they had an obligation to, to service. And just so it's understood, Tri-Town unto itself is a separate sovereign government, if you will. We have a, all the powers and duties of a mayor, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Conservation, you name it, when any, an applicant comes before the Tri-Town Board of Directors, it's one-stop shopping. So, we sit sometimes as multiple boards and approve plans that particular night. So, and we're responsible for fire, police, ambulance, the whole, just as though we were a separate town, you know, unto ourselves. So, you know, for that basis, yes, we would be, you know, making an agreement, purchasing water and, and the like.
Just one quick question, we'll focus more on that.
That's all.
Of the properties that have been completed, they've been selling, are they captured down?
They, yeah, they've, LNR has reported, and that's solely within their domain, but they have been reporting, the first home sold for a half a million dollars, a single-family home. The townhouses are going for in the neighborhood of
$300,000?
$300,000. And we understand that there's an intense amount of interest in it, so.
Just now that you brought up firing the police, do you have your own fire?
Right now, no.
Police forces?
No. What, what, right now, is that the, we're working out an agreement with the mayor, because the current structures are under the geographical bounds of the town of Waymouth. We are working out an agreement, they, the Navy, under the retrocession agreement, when the Navy was there, there was a requirement that the town of Waymouth had to provide public safety services to the base until the Navy was out of it. We are working with an agreement, a short-term agreement, until such time as the Parkway is completed, that Waymouth would continue those services. I had brought in former chief of the Boston Fire Department, Kevin McCurtin, to do a complete study as relates to fire protection, which is ongoing now. I wanted to look at codes and ordinances, fire protection, the working of the three communities together, water supply, as it relates to the overall structure. And he's almost completed with his report, he's been working with the three town fire chiefs, you know, to develop a plan as it relates to that. Police protection is a little different, we've, town of Waymouth, we're working out an agreement right now with them. I envision that once the Parkway is completed, then there's a question right now, and it's more of a political issue at that point, as to, we would offer it up to the three communities to see if they wanted to bid on it. In some respects, some may want it, some may not, but to keep it equal, the way the legislation was intended, is that any fire and police would be first offered to the three communities first. If they didn't want it, then you could either, you know, establish your own or contract on another basis. To be practical about it, I don't envision, obviously, in my work period, that we're going to do anything different than utilize one of the three communities. I just don't see that we're going to build out, you know, that, that quickly, that is going to entail our own, I'll have the financial ability to deal with that. I mean, we'd be looking at, on the short term, probably a new fire station on Route 18 in and around the base, so that you could have access to, you know, be able to offer services to Abington, the base, Rockland, and Waymouth, so that you'd be pivoted, you know, ideally, to be able to respond on it. But that's down the road, you know, from that standpoint. But I do envision, perhaps maybe DPW services coming, you know, quicker than we would anticipate.
One more. And sewage, will be treated on-site?
No. Sewage, right now, again, two things. One would be, part of it would go to Waymouth through the MWRA, and again, if we were to utilize the Abington/Rockland situation, would go to Rockland. That's still in the discussion stages now, but that, that would be, again, down the line, is something. We do have, Whitewater Management is our engineering company and supply company that actually does the, oh, God, for the city of Somerville River, they deal with the entire structure, and they're, right now, detailing it for us as well, conducting that study and providing the recommendations.
Anyone else?
Kevin, I have a couple of questions. One is, you would, you had said, and I don't remember at what point, that there was a possibility of an assessment to the three communities if something was not met?
No, that was not to the communities, to the individual landholders within the base.
Would that be Abington?
No. There's no cost, specifically, under the legislation, there are no costs to the communities. If we, if we provide, if the towns provide services to the base, it has to be at no cost. And likewise, there can be no cost borne by the individual communities. The only thing you can get out of it is money.
Oh, that's, that's good. I like that.
Yeah, the, what they do is, if the economic gains don't happen, it's what the state has, probably use the term clawback. They can go back and say, Waymouth, I'm taking back some of this financing you gave us, because your projections did not meet what you told us was going to happen, and we don't have enough coming from you to service our debt that we gave you, what are you going to do about it? So, they're going to look to the corporation, or to LNR or someplace, to
To come up with the
To come up with the shuttle.
Okay. The other question deals with the potential that there would be some expansion of sewer use with Rockland. Is there a possibility that Abington could get some additional capacity that we would be willing to
I think
Network or pay for?
And that's the reason I'm bringing it up, is that I think if we were to, and again, this is all hypothetical right now, but my, my idea and vision would be just that, is that anything we would do to improve the Rockland plant would allow the capacity not only for the base, but for additional capacity, and I guess then it would be up to
We would be very interested in
Then it would be up to, then the town, to negotiate with the Rockland Sewer Commissioners to see if you could avail yourself of that capacity.
Again, we've had low-level discussions about that, but it's down the road, we haven't been able to timeline it. But, you know, Abington and Rockland did come to us and say, what about sewer? So, the pipeline is there between the two of us, so to speak, and
We would be very interested in an increased capacity opportunity.
And he'll be making the same presentation to the Rockland Board of Selectmen next week, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
Very good.
I just got to do this for one second. I should have done it at the beginning, but good things always come last. Mary Cudero sitting out here, she's our town clerk, she handles every affairs on a day-to-day basis back there. And Patricia Magenski-Petrillo, who's not here this evening, is our controller. So, Kevin, we have five employees?
We're up to seven now.
We're up to seven, well, three of them, I don't know about the other four, but the other, three of them, or the original three, come from Abington. So, we've done pretty well on the job creation for residents of Abington. And when we have that opportunity in the future, we do look for the three towns to bring up their qualifications of, in any individual state want to go forward, but they're all, how we have is a lean, mean machine, and they're all working very hard to make sure this project goes forward. And thank you again. Didn't mean to jump in, but
Thank you, Jim.
There we go.
Thanks. Next on the agenda, we have a transfer of a common vicula license from 806 Brockton Avenue, Billy's House of Pizza. Is the applicant in? Sir, could you please take the podium and state your name? Sir, could you please take the podium and state your name? There's two applicants on the, on the application. Is your partner here?
I have a
Okay. Right there. Just state your name, please.
Over here.
Yep. Are you, are you, what's your first name, sir?
Magid, M-A-G-E-D.
Okay. Could you pronounce your full name?
Magid, M-A-G-E-D. The last name, Gobriel, G-H-O-B-R.
Does anyone have any questions for Magid?
I was going to stay the same as they were.
Yes, the same, yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Magid. Good luck.
Thanks.
All set, yeah?
Thank you.
All set. Thanks. All right. Next on the agenda, we have an applicant, Adele Leonard, requesting an appointment as Abington's representative to the South Shore Vocational Technical High School Committee. Adele, are you here? Adele, would you please take the microphone and just state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Adele Leonard.
Pleased to meet you, Adele. Does anyone have any questions for Adele?
Just, I just have a whole list of questions. Thanks a lot. No, I just, as you probably know, Adele, I'm a writer, working from VOTAC, and it's the nearest place for me, and I know you've been involved down there, and I just, you know, want to wish you well in terms of your service, hopefully you'll be able to answer any question. I think that the primary concern that I've always had is that sometimes people get lost and they, they don't remember that Social VOTAC is funded by the communities and therefore, in my opinion, by the public school system. And I know they're not directly with the Abington Public School, and it's always been one of my FPs when people talk about VOTAC and they don't consider us, unless I was, because I spent four years there as part of the public school, and I know it is, the school itself has come a long way, you know, since I've been there. I just had a meeting of the health group, Mayflower Health Group and the Culinary Department, and the kids did a wonderful job. So I would just ask that you keep that in mind, and as I know you well.
Not a problem. I have both children that have graduated from VOTAC.
Yes.
So I have no problem with that.
Can you just give a little bit of your background as to what your interests?
Well, I've lived in the town all my life, Abington. I am a food service director at the Rockland Public Schools now, which I absolutely love my job. I work for Chatwills, I'm a food service director. Both my children graduated from Social VOTAC. I was the chairperson at Social VOTAC for the PTO for many years while the children were going through school. I had a lot of involvement in there. I knew, know the superintendent, the principals, I'm very involved with the new, with knowing of the new principal because of Tom Hickey, who is the superintendent. I take a lot of pride in the children because I work with children every day, and I find it very interesting. So I, I would be there for the town as well as for the school.
Great. I'm glad you stepped forward, so.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Mr. Brian said, I'm excited that you stepped forward. I think you're a very good candidate for this, and I'd like to make a motion to record Adele.
If we have a second?
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Good luck, good luck. Congratulations, Adele. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda, we have our school superintendent, Peter Schaefer, to present a feasibility study and schematic design overview, and to also resubmit statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Mr. Schaefer, whenever you're ready.
It's in there. Just going to wait a second for the PowerPoint projector to come up, and, but I don't want to
Can you take over?
In the interim, Peter Schaefer, you're superintendent of schools in the Abington Public Schools. And I want to start by thanking the chairman and the board of selectmen for having me this evening. I also want to thank John D'Agostino, Dory Jamison, Leo Provost, and Jack Pistorino here at the town hall for the partnership and the work that we've been doing. This is very similar to the Woodsdale Window Project, in that what I'm going to be talking about is partnering with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to solve a building need that we have. That last partnership that we worked with everyone on has saved the town approximately $600,000 in the window replacement that you see going on at the Woodsdale Elementary School. And obviously, that was a project that needed to be done, and we need to save money. The project is, I, I, I don't want to say that it's coming in under budget because it's currently underway, and you never know in construction when you have a surprise, but it is, at this time, $400,000 below the estimated initial costs. So we would be, it's a reimbursement program, so we would be receiving even more money from the state. The good news is, we don't need to spend that money because the project's being done very affordably over at the Woodsdale. Again, similar to that is this presentation, trying to work with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I started with a little bit of a history lesson, because I've received this question from the community a number of times. What I'm talking about tonight is working with MSBA to do a feasibility study around construction and renovation in Abington. Ten years ago, at the 2002 annual town meeting, approximately $40,000 was allocated for the completion of an Abington Public Schools master facilities plan. And I've had people say to me, we did one, why do we have to do another one? That plan that we did back in 2002 included building assessments, demographic and enrollment projections, enrollment capacities, technology planning, and short-term options. It also included a number of longer-term options. The one that rose to the top of the pile was the construction of a middle school, grades five through eight. It was one of 20 some-odd options, to take the existing infrastructure, school building and construction, marry the new with the old, to come up with a very economical way to solve our problems. An overview of this is the theme, that what this feasibility plan does is, we go to MSBA with a problem, and they work with us to solve it in a way that's affordable and maximizes effective capacity. In 2004, a new school building authority was created. Now, previous to 2004, the old School Building Authority was in debt. The cost of projects ran up beyond what the state could afford, and so it was shut down, there was a moratorium, and, and that was the, the old SBA program required we do those feasibility studies on our own. As of 2004, the new Massachusetts School Building Authority requires we do want a feasibility study with them. So we would be required to do this study if we were going to move forward. And what's happened with this new School Building Authority is, is really important for everybody to understand, is they take one penny from the sales tax in Massachusetts, and they dedicate it to new school construction. And then the town would pick, picks up the rest of it. And that's how Rockland, Hanover, East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, and Whitman and Hanson have built schools. Actually, all of us in this room have paid for most of those schools with our tax dollars from the sales tax, because the School Building Authority pays for the majority of the project and the town picks up the remaining costs. So they use that sales tax, that dedicated stream of income, to build those schools in, in the surrounding communities around Abington, and that's the work that's been done over the last couple of years. The information from the previous plan was not wasted. The previous plan provided the information for the ECC, which is now the Beaverbrook Replacement Roof Project. It provided the information, it provided the information for the window project. It provided the information for the window and door replacement project at Abington High School, and also for the window project at the Woodsdale School. And again, that, that project's coming along very well and has saved Abington quite a bit of money. So that plan was well-used. That was a good investment of money. It's returned quite a bit to Abington. Abington has been invited to collaborate with the new MSBA, new in the last six, seven years, in conducting a feasibility study to find the most fiscally responsible and educationally appropriate solution to our identified problems. Our problem in Abington right now is an overcrowding in the grades pre-kindergarten through grade eight. And if anyone is skeptical about that, I would invite you to take a look at our buildings when they're in operation. I respect everyone's opinion, I just hope that they make informed decisions about their opinions, and just please come, take a tour while we're in operation. I know members of the Board of Selectmen, that would be overtime with all the money that you get paid for being on the board, but I'm inviting you to come with me, walk through the buildings. I'm kidding, because obviously you volunteer, and you don't get paid anything, I'll make that clear to people at home. But please come and, and see the buildings with me, take a tour while we're in operation if you're skeptical about our space needs. The majority of our buildings in Abington were built in the 1930s. They were built at the end of the Depression. And if we do our jobs in education the right way, education has changed since the Depression. People often say, that's the school building that I went to, and it was good enough for me, and we have taken care of these buildings. These buildings have been well-maintained, we've been responsible stewards of the public trust in these public buildings, and therefore, they are still good for the education of children. However, one of the things that has occurred is they didn't have computer labs at the end of the Depression. So we've carved out classroom spaces for computer labs, and the libraries that they had during the Depression didn't involve using computers also. So the media that resides in our libraries, it's, is substantial, and it means all of our libraries are now undersized. It crowds out the other elements that make a library a good library. You know there's no real gymnasium in the two small schools, the center and the north. Gymnasium space is a precious commodity. Multiple-purpose playing field space in Abington is a precious commodity. The town of Abington doesn't have an auditorium. We would be looking to take all of these elements in this feasibility study as our problems to MSBA, and ask for their assistance in how to solve this problem. I can't stand here before you tonight and say that that would mean the construction or renovation of the high school and adding grades there, or a detached building, or a campus setting up here around the town hall. Those would be healthy and wonderful things for the community and for the town of Abington, and they would, they would substantially benefit the life of the community of Abington. I don't know what the answer will be coming out of feasibility, but I do know that our identified problem is a lack of space in the pre-kindergarten through grade eight ages. And anything we do, my recommendation would be, to this feasibility study, would be that, that we solve that problem. The MSBA provides reimbursement grants to districts to create affordable, sustainable, energy-efficient schools across Massachusetts. The reimbursement rate is formulated on a community income factor, a community property wealth factor, and a community poverty factor. Those things are determined by the Department of Revenue. So I couldn't stand here tonight and tell you what the reimbursement would be. I can give you a reasonable estimate of a range, and I can, I can give you a pretty tight window on what that will be, though. Additional points are awarded to schools, to towns that use high-efficiency green schools, best practices for routine and capital maintenance, which again, which we demonstrated historically, renovation and reuse of existing facilities, the use of the model school program. If you take a look at the school that Whitman-Hanson built and Hanover built, they are identical. There are some, there are some differences, but you save money if you use their designs. Those designs certainly would be sufficient for Abington. Creating a new school region. Based on the MSBA Green Repair Project at the Woodsdale Elementary School, all things determined by the DOR likely remaining very similar in the coming years to what they are now, a reimbursement would be between 53% and 56%. Next steps. In conjunction with the MSBA, a school building committee for Abington would need to be convened, and the membership is, which is required by MSBA include the following people. But then we could add the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the town of Abington could add whoever or whatever qualifications it desires beyond these people. But minimally, it requires a Massachusetts-certified public purchasing official, local chief executive officer, the town manager, one school committee member, the superintendent of schools, local official responsible for building maintenance, a school principal, a member knowledgeable, a member from the town, the community knowledgeable in the educational mission and function of the facilities, local budget official or member of the local finance committee, and a member of the community with architectural, engineering, and/or construction experience. The next step also involves requesting money at the annual town meeting for Abington's portion of this study to create and fund a feasibility study, schematic design for a project that will address the overcrowding at the elementary level. The estimated cost is between $700,000 and $800,000 for this type of study in total. Again, Abington would pay a portion of that. The state would pick up between 53% and 56% of it. I have a copy of the study that Rockland did on my desk at my office. I paid $50 for their study because I only photocopied it, but they, they had a similar situation a couple of years ago before they went to renovating their high, renovating and rebuilding their high school. The feasibility study and what you get for those dollars, you start by hiring a project manager, which is required by the state, which is required by the 2000 inform construction reform laws. You hire a designer and architectural firm, and you have to select those people from the MSBA's approved list. You do a preliminary design program. You define the programmatic, functional, spatial, environmental requirements of the educational facility necessary to meet the district's educational program. You perform and review and investigate the required, an investigation required to clearly define the existing building deficiencies. You review site conditions, site access, circulation, parking, zoning issues, limitations, utilities, facility service, et cetera. The designer will provide an elevation of alternatives upon which, I'm sorry, an evaluation of alternatives upon which the most educationally appropriate and fiscally responsible solution will be recommended. The plan is that you build a school with some vision for the next 50 years. Again, Abington, we did quite a bit of construction in the Depression, and, not that those aren't good buildings and they wouldn't be used for a useful purpose in town or as school buildings, but education has changed since we built those buildings. At the end of the feasibility and the schematic design, you all, you end up with preliminary, with a preliminary evaluation of alternatives, preferred schematic report, which is, which is an in-depth report detailing all findings, proposed project design, preliminary construction schedule, and estimates of construction costs. And then, MSBA is so involved with this at this point, again, because they don't want to get on the hook for building these Taj Mahal schools that are beyond the capacity of the state or the town. The more school building they can do across the state, putting students in new and renovated classrooms, the better they've served their mission. Final design and program, and robust schematic design of sufficient detail to establish a scope, budget, and a schedule for the proposed project. I'm going to be available for some questions, but these are some questions that I've heard from people. The first one is, why now? The funding of the Commonwealth MSBA program could pay for over the half of the projected costs of construction that Abington's going to need sooner or later. We have significant space issues and a lack of educationally appropriate space for our elementary through middle school students. We're on the list now. We will not always remain on the list. I don't want to cry wolf, I don't want to, I don't want to say something that isn't true. Eventually, we will come off the list to partner with MSBA. We've been holding on that list for about three years now, and we withdrew this plan over the last couple of years because of the difficult times we were all facing. times we were, uh, all facing. Eventually, we'll be off the list. That doesn't mean we can't reapply and hopefully get back on the list, uh, but we're on it Next, uh, other, other questions I've received are, Abington has closed schools in the past few years. Why not use these? We closed the center and the north. We're currently very successfully using the center school for a pre-K and K program that I've heard nothing but rave reviews about from our parents in terms of the early education program we're running there. It's nice to have a small building for that, uh, and for that age. The north school right now is being leased by North River Collaborative. Those vans there, they use it as a transportation satellite. They've got a program there for children. That offsets the cost of having the administrative offices in that building. If we kick me out of a school building, the place I was in can be used as classroom space because we need classroom space. That's why that made sense. To open the north school as an elementary school means that we have to hire a principal, a secretary, a custodian, and a nurse. Operationally, that's a quarter of a million dollars every single year for Abington. A quarter of a million dollars in salaries to run a, to run a 10-classroom school building is a lot of money because the north school's a wonderful school building. People, uh, people cherish, they love the brick and the mortar of that building. It's a very special place. But we can't afford it. It's not an efficient way to run a school system. We had a three-through-six north school, a three-through-six center school, and a three-through-six Woodsdale school, three different locations in town. So we were paying for all of the support services to keep those open and especially those small buildings with just 10, 11 classrooms. Is, is a lot of, uh, those are a lot of operational dollars to expend every year in a way that's very inefficient. By taking that quarter of a million dollars and investing it back in classroom teachers, we reduce our class sizes because we want teachers in front of students. That's the best way to provide service to kids. The, um, we can't afford, uh, to, to open those school buildings because when, now what we've done is we've got one grade level in each school building, pre-K through 12. So all of the students in grade three now are in the same place. All the grade students in grade four are in the same place. So we're not creating redundant programs, special education programs, music programs, uh, whatever, whatever type of program for children we're offering, um, you find efficiencies by consolidating it. Next question I hear, uh, quite a bit is, why not regionalize with a neighboring community? And if Abington would like to regionalize with Holbrook, then, um, that would be something that Abington should do. I'm not opposed to working on that. Um, I work at the direction of my board. I have yet to hear people in Abington tell me that they think that that would be something they want to do. I've heard people in Holbrook talk about regionalizing with Abington quite a bit. Um, I am not going to be an obstructionist or oppose that. Um, I mean, I'm happy to work with people, uh, to that end if that's what they want to do. But we, we need to do something, um, about our school buildings. Um, and so far, I haven't been hearing Abington come to me anywhere and, uh, talk about the need to regionalize with Holbrook. Um, and the other communities, other than Holbrook, have already built schools and, and facilities for their communities. The last question we have is, uh, is Griffin's Dairy still the site on which you plan to build a new school? No site has been chosen. Again, we'll go to MSBA with the problem, look for them to help us with a solution. Um, and, um, so, so Griffin's Dairy is not and, uh, eliminated from the list of possibilities. And at the same time, it's, it's not the place where we're going to build a school because we just, we don't have that answer. It would be wonderful if we could build a campus setting up here at Abington High School around the town hall with the Riley Field. If there's room to do that, I think that would, that's just my opinion, it'd be a wonderful benefit to the community. I'm available for any questions.
The, uh, preliminary design program, how long the process is that?
How long does the preliminary design take? About a year?
And once you're done with that, are you ready to actually build a school at that point in time?
That's, I appreciate that question because, um, there's something, there's something, uh, that's going to piggyback on top of that. After that year, you're ready to come back to the town and say, this is what it costs to solve the problem. And you say to the town of Abington, what do you, what do you want to do? So the voters have an opportunity to vote, um, on the solution to the problem, uh, hopefully after that year. So by getting your support for a feasibility study, it doesn't lock anybody into building any kind of a school until this committee comes back and we know what MSBA will work with us, what the reimbursement would be. And so all of those things are much clearer so people know to vote up or down what they want to do for a school.
But after that one-year period or so, then if the town says go, then you-
You're there.
You're there to build a school at that point.
Yes.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any other questions for the superintendent? Go ahead, Gary.
How many children do you anticipate to be in grades five and eight, or how many are there now and do you, is it going to trend up or down?
The estimate at the time we did this work was grades five and eight would be about an 800-student school building.
And now if a new middle school is built, what would happen to the portfolio of the Woodsdale, I won't take a lot of money to the Woodsdale?
Yeah, they would still be school buildings. I appreciate that question. They would still be, uh, I'm sure it's one that other people have, they would still be school buildings. They would change, we would change the grade configuration. And that's what creates the multiple-purpose classroom space because you're pulling grades, um, out of other places and you're putting them in the new school and that creates space in the school buildings that you have.
So this would add another school to, to the schools that we have, or would, would one of them have?
Eventually, we'd take the center school offline, um, perhaps even the north school building, but right now that's, we're leasing that out to save money and good, good use of the building. And then they'd be, those schools would be turned back over to the town. Um, well, that would be my recommendation to the school committee to turn those back over to the town for, the town to do what they would want to do with them.
I just have a question on the, uh, on the window project. What, what exactly is the status of that? How, how far along are you on that, that, that?
In the next, uh, presentation about the statements of interests that we're going to have to apply, that we're going to keep going with the state, Felicia's got an update on that in terms of the exact percentage completion. Do you know about where we are? Do you want to?
Don't know.
You just tell me, I'll-
Um, the completion date, uh, right now substantial completion is the middle of January.
The substantial completion date, uh, just so that people, because I have the microphone, uh, for people at home, is the middle of January.
They've completed the backside. They started on the front today. Um, the gym is complete.
The, the entire back is complete, the gym is complete, and they've started on the front. We started around the back and, um, the warm weather's helped us quite a bit. Uh, the, uh, also the lack of rain has helped us quite a bit and wind.
Now, do we ever do in that project at night like they talk about?
Yes. Yep.
And weekends.
And weekends.
Three days during the weekend, two days.
In terms of the feasibility study, was the school committee made a determination of whether they're going to submit an article for town meeting on their participant?
Uh, they have not voted on the language, um, but they've indicated to me that they will be doing, that they support that, that they will be taking that vote and they would be, uh, in favor of doing that.
Yeah, I think it's important, obviously, to get the ball rolling at this stage of the game. You know, as you rightly point out, the construction of school buildings in the town, we haven't had one since. I think the last one was the high school by Melissa as well. So I think it's very prudent to begin the process and see where it goes. I mean, it becomes a question, obviously, of finding it, but at some stage, in order to provide for the future, um, we have to begin somewhere. And I remember having this debate years ago when we were talking about, you know, a new police station, a new, you know, a new fire department, uh, headquarters. It was all, you gotta begin somewhere and I think it's prudent that we begin now with the schools.
I also believe, and maybe, John, you could tell me, there is some debt service coming off the books in the years to come.
We, um, in FY 13 or beginning of FY 14 is approximately $600,000 in debt service that's coming off, um, the, the books for the town. By the time we finish the feasibility study, if it takes a year, it'll be perfectly timed, so to speak, with, you know, some significant debt coming off so that there would not be a, um, significant spike or increase or impact on the current, uh, tax rates that are, that are currently paid. I, I just want to add, you know, some thoughts, uh, because we have our, uh, weekly, um, finance meetings together, uh, with the schools and the town and, and all of those meetings have been very, very productive. I, I will say that for town to look to the future, that is our responsibility. The leadership of the community must make that decision. Um, I think that, uh, so when you look at $700,000, people say, wow, that's, that's a huge number. Um, and we spent 40, um, you know, half dozen years ago or so, or maybe a little bit more. And now we're spending, you know, a considerable amount more. The reason why, I think, is primarily because you're going to have a product that will answer everyone's question in relationship to how many school, how many classrooms are going to be built in this school, how that school is going to look, how much it's going to cost. Are we going to do a green, um, footprint-type school, uh, or a carbon-free footprint? All of those, where it's going to be located, how much benefit that will have in relationship to potentially building a, uh, high school auditorium, which I think is, is something that we also need to look at. And I think if we're able to increase flow capacity to our sewer, um, system, whether with, um-
Rockland.
Rockland, or for that matter, um, Brockton. I think that both of those are going to, to be significant in our decision-making capacities to whether or not our future population is going to continue to grow at the elementary school level. And as you know, once they start through the system, they end up in the high school. And, you know, we have to be very cognizant that we have enough space, um, to accommodate, uh, future trends, particularly if our sewer moratoriums, um, are lifted, we have and solve those issues over the next three to five years. I fully support, uh, the study. For us not to do the study is to turn a blind eye on the potential need for the community as a whole. And I think that our responsibility, mine, and as a manager and potentially you as a board and certainly a school committee and, and staff, is to plan for the future. This is the best time to plan for it, even though, you know, people are out of work and, 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 and our costs are, uh, you know, for the local taxpayer is going to be significant. It is not in the sense that the current tax rate will not change significantly, but more importantly, we could get, at this point going forward, a better cost figure in a downed economy, in a downed, uh, market than we will in the next four to five years. So I think the time is right from a, um, an economic perspective, even though the economy isn't doing as well. I do think that we can get a far better price, um, on a construction project today, the potential we can five years from now. No one knows what the economy's going to, going to be doing in the next five years. I can guarantee you, it's not going to go, it's not going to be any worse than it currently is, although there are some people who think the complete opposite. I think we've hit bottom. Um, we can't go any lower. So from my perspective, uh, I certainly enthusiastically endorse the superintendent's efforts to do this. I think it's wise for us to plan. We have the ability to pay for it with debt coming off in FY 13. And I think that, um, this should be a debt exclusion if the board decides to support this. Uh, this is something that we cannot, um, cover or encapsulate in the, in the current, um, tax rate that we have currently. So I, I just offer those thoughts to the board and to the-
Thank you, John. Typically, we save public comment for the end of the meeting, but I would be happy to make an exception if anyone on the floor has any questions for the superintendent. Mr. Deli, Mr. Deli, you're going to have to, uh, approach the mic if you want to ask something.
Can I have one more question while we turn this way up?
Yeah.
Um, if we're going to spend between $700,000 and $1,500,000, we'll get half of it back fully. Now, once we spend that money and we, you know, we have feasibility study done and schematic design, is it a done deal? Do you automatically, you're on the list? We know we're on the list now. We do this design, we spend close to a half million dollars. Is it automatically, yes, you're going to be approved? Or is it, you know, or is it just, yeah, you got a good shot now?
No, that's, uh, that's a good question. That's why the MSBA wants to be in with you at this point. So, um, they're part of making the plan because they know they're going to approve it, uh, down the road. Now, if we come up with a plan and we decide to go beyond that and we look for MSBA to make a commitment beyond, um, anything in the plan, we own that ourselves. But MS, that's why MSBA partners with you now to come up with a plan that everybody can live with.
So it's a partnership?
Yes.
Let, let me just, uh, offer one other thought before we, you know, continue with our public comment. And that is, there is very strong indication that Abington, over the next 180 days, uh, will be pulled from, um, this eligibility list unless we do something. Uh, that's my understanding. I think that Senator, uh, Keenan had, had expressed those thoughts to me and I had a brief telephone conversation with, uh, Representative Deal who basically said, hey, we've got to, they do something.
So, just, I, because that's one, sorry, Mel, but just one question. That was one of the questions I was going to ask. So we've been on this list for three years, correct? Approximately three years?
On and off.
Approximately three years. No, we've been on it for the entire time.
But there's been no movement.
Right. And what you're saying, John, is if we don't move forward, then we're going to be taken off the list and-
And we'll have to reapply and go, go through the cycle again, uh, to get back on the eligibility list.
And again, right now, Massachusetts dedicates one cent of our sales tax to this and I don't know how much longer that'll, I don't know where that's going to go. I know it's here today. Thanks.
Thanks, Pete. Mel?
Going to let me talk? I don't know. Mel Deal is 438 Rockland Street in Abington. First of all, I'm a fixed-income person and I'm appalled of our schools. I think we got to do something about this. I'm on a fixed income, but I want our kids to have the best. And I don't want to go to Whitman, Rockland, and all these other schools and look at their schools and look at ours, what this young fella has to do with what he's got. I think it's about time Abington gets off his duffel and does something about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deli Ellis. Does anybody else have anything for the superintendent? Mike?
Just a couple things. I absolutely support you doing it here. Um, but one comment I have is that, um, I travel, I'm a social, I see what other towns are doing and it is, I'm beyond what towns have to do to get something. But I, I know when being involved in big decisions like this, uh, the ability to allow the public to ask questions and to observe the process is, is critical to going to be successful. So my only, my only comment would be that we can, uh, as much as we can allow the public to put, you know, whether they have a hearing, a PTO, or whatever we do, I think going forward, I'm going to be successful. And that's-
Thank you, uh, Mike. I have been going to the PTO meetings. I plan to ask if I can go to Rotary. I'd also like to meet with the, the realtors in town and, and see if I can get a group of realtors together because I know that obviously it improves the property and the value of the town as a whole. And I think that, I think that, again, I, I want to meet with different groups, um, to, to be, uh, a resource to answer questions.
I'll make note too that this presentation is on the school website.
Thank you.
It's up there now.
Anything else for Peter?
Do you, what do you want the board to do?
I'm not looking for a vote this evening. This is informational. Um, it, it, when we submit, obviously, the warrant and the language, we get the language from MSBA. We have to partner with MSBA to get the right language for the warrant so that it's all, um, appropriate. And which is why, um, Felicia has language with you about our statements of interest around other projects we have in Abington. These are to get these other building projects on their list. They don't commit us to spending any dollars. They just, uh, raise our hand with the state so they know that we're going to apply, we could potentially apply for dollars in the future.
Okay. Hi, Felicia.
Hello. Thank you. As Peter said, um, in front of you, you have three statements of interest for, one for the Woodsdale, one for the high school, and one for the ECC, otherwise known as Beaverbrook. Um, those statements of interest have been submitted, um, the last few years. They are not, um, our priority project, but what they do is keep them on the radar screen, uh, at the MSBA so that, um, we do have our one project in the pipe, in what they call the feasibility pipeline. And, uh, after that one's- pipeline, and after that one's completed or funded, or not funded, these would be the next projects. And what I'm asking you for tonight is a vote to submit them, as we have in the past, and again, we're not asking for funding, we're just asking to be kept in the queue or on the list with the school building authority.
Okay.
Ready, go.
Okay, so I have to, we have to read these and take, I'm sorry.
That's what I was going to ask you. Want to read all of them, or you want to...
Yeah.
What would you, what would you suggest?
I would suggest that I make a motion that we summarize in the formal vote that we have before us relating to the submission for the Abington High School for Priority Seven, the replacement of, in addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements in the form that is currently before us as delineated. Part of that, the second part of that motion will be relating to the Beaverbrook Elementary School for Priority Five, for the replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roof, window, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs of a school facility in the formal vote that's presently before us and part of the public record. And thirdly, for the Woodsdale School for Priority Seven, replacement of addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements in the formal vote that's part of the public record and currently before us, and those are the motions.
Do I have a second?
I actually wanted to hear you read all this.
I thought I was going to have to.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Did anyone have any other Woodsdale window questions, or did, was Peter able to answer them all?
Any other, any questions about the Woodsdale windows? No?
I will say, once the project is complete, we'll have kind of an open house, and people will be able to come by and, and take a look, and I think people will be very happy with, with the work that's been done thus far and, and continuing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Felicia. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a vote on the proposed grant application to Massachusetts' Department of Housing and Community Development for funding from its FY 2012 Community Development Fund Program. Wayne, would you please approach the podium and introduce yourself?
Wayne Darrow, Community Opportunities Group. We are the town's grant consultant, and we're working on preparation of a grant application for submission this Friday. This is a continuation of the public hearing that we had previously to discuss the town's community development strategy and potential activities for the application. After our last meeting, I distributed a draft community development strategy to Mr. D'Agostino. He forwarded that to all the department heads, made that available, and I will say, your department heads were great. I actually, I received direct comments from a number of your department heads with suggestions for additional activities to add, or confirming that aspects of the community development strategy represent their feelings about the needs of the community, and that projects they were interested in were already on the list of priority needs. So it was, it was a response from department heads like I have never seen in another community, so I just want to commend you on, on the staff you have here. They're obviously paying attention and, and participating.
That's very nice to hear. Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Darrow?
I did have a question, Wayne. Last time we took a look at this...
We talked about the target areas, correct?
Is that cast in stone, or is that, how does that get adopted? Is that through us, or...
That, that's considered part of the community development strategy, so if you were to adopt the community development strategy, that would be adopted with it, since those, those target areas are described within the community development strategy.
And this is a yearly application, is that the case?
Yeah, well, in the case of Abington, because of your class, classification as a CDF II community, should we be successful this year, you're not going to be eligible to submit again in 2013, you're going to have to sit out the next round, so you won't be eligible again until 2014.
And at that point in time, can the areas of...
At that point in time, we revisit the community development strategy and, and see if there are reasons to expand target areas, or change them, or eliminate them. That is a, that is a continual conversation. The, the idea is that perhaps if you're successful with your community development block grant projects, you begin to eliminate the needs in some of these areas, and you're able to designate other areas that have other needs.
My only thought was, Abington Center itself, the area around Abington Center, was not made part of the area, and that is, just that, there's a lot of older homes in that area, long-time homes there. Would you like to amend it?
It's a, it's a valid point. I will say that we have, we have already done what we call windshield surveys, which is sort of a, by the seat of your pants, review of the housing structures in these two target areas. We surveyed over 200 properties in the target area, and I think the number was 52 of the 200 we looked at, we considered to have either conditions that would make them substandard or seriously substandard in terms of roofs that were at the end of their useful life, or losing shingles, chimneys that were missing bricks, or needed to be repointed, front stairs that were cracked or settled or spalling, a number of different issues, rotten fascia, failing paint, those sort of items. So there certainly is sufficient need in the areas as they're presently defined.
I, I don't doubt that. I was just, last time, was the first time I really got a chance to look at this before this meeting.
And I think one of the criteria also is to look at the economic factors of, of those two particular target areas to make sure that a majority of those individuals that reside in the target area would be eligible to participate in the program.
And then, and then, and especially the North Abington target areas outlined there, it, it captures the two census tracts with the highest percentage of low-margin income individuals in the community. So we're right on the money with that one.
What about, in the Green Street area was the other?
Surprisingly, it was not a particularly, particularly high LMI percentage, about 30.5%.
Still all right?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Wayne? Okay, we have a series of votes to be, to be taken.
Did Whitman already approve this?
Whitman doesn't, Whitman, all they have to do is agree to participate. They don't have a public hearing process as, as we're having here, but I'm meeting with them tomorrow night. I met with them the night after I met with you last, and so they'll be signing their joint, joint authorization form to participate tomorrow night, and they actually have their own CDS. Every community that participates in the application has to have their own community development strategy. So it's been sort of parallel processes through, as we've moved along here.
Okay, I'll, I'll read the motions, and we can, you can so move them, or second them, or not. To move that we approve the town's community development strategy as amended, including the target areas and list of priority projects.
So...
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. To move that we designate the town manager as the environmental certifying officer for the purposes of the environmental review record.
So...
Second?
So we come with a...
Any discussion?
Some, sometimes this does bring up discussion. The, the environmental certifying officer, basically, his role is to say that, it's not to make any sort of environmental judgments whatsoever, he's just certifying that the process that's required under HUD's regulations to review each activity deter, to determine if it's subject to further review, or if it's exempt from review, if you need to analyze it and discuss impacts, that those, and also that the appropriate agencies who do oversee those items, such as Local Conservation Commission, EPA, Mass Historic, that those organizations have been contacted, they've sent, been sent a consultation letter, and given time to respond to this. So he's basically, the environmental certifying officer, certifying that all the appropriate steps have been taken. It's not usurping any power that your Whitman's conservation officer might have, or something like that.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. One more. To move that we authorize the chairman and other department heads, as necessary, to complete the application process.
To sign?
There's a number of forms that need signature by chairman, town manager, your treasurer, et cetera.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion.
You seconded it. Andy so moved it.
Doesn't matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
You have one more?
I did four.
You did three.
I did three? Wow, what I missed?
You skipped the most important one.
I checked it off before I read it.
See?
All right. To move that we approve the submission of fiscal year 2012 Community Development Fund Two application to the Department of Housing and Community Development in an amount not to exceed $800,000 to fund a regional housing rehabilitation program with the town of Whitman, and to provide assistance to the Abington and Whitman food pantries.
So moved. Sorry.
Second?
There are a lot of movements over here.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're, now we're done. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Darrow?
Just, is now with the process, if you could just explain a little bit about...
The application will be submitted by Friday. DHCD is telling us that they will have decisions on the, this round of funding by April. They tend to be very ambitious in setting those deadlines. I would suspect that probably May or June is a more reasonable time to expect an answer on the application, and hopefully we'll be in a position to be able to move on to the next step, starting July 1st. And it's an 18-month implementation timeline that they give you. I would expect, because we're, we're dealing with first-time communities here and a brand-new program, that it's going to require quite a bit of marketing to homeowners, to develop a waiting list, and to hold a lottery, that it's probably going to be more like a 24-month timeline by the time we're done with this, which actually works out fine, because that puts us right back to about the application period that you'll be eligible for again, so.
The $800,000, it's not all or nothing, right? It could be something in between?
Well, for the most part, it is all or nothing. I mean, there are instances where they reduce awards for certain purposes, or, you know, if they're getting towards the end of the list, they may pull a particular activity out of someone's, someone's application in order to get them some degree of funding. But for the most part, they find funding that allows them to fully fund the applications that come across, or, or that they decide to fund. Because everything's tied, tied together, it would be hard for them to pull something out without affecting the way the rest of the application would work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wayne.
Good. Wayne, could you just comment on the assistance, what, the assistance of the Abington and Whitman food pantries? What, what would that involve? How does that work?
Sure. In the, in the process of meeting with the Council on Aging Directors and, and looking at what the needs of the community's neediest citizens were, something that had come up was the increased demand that the Abington food pantry has been facing over the last year or so. I mean, an incredible increase in demand, especially, you know, not just at holiday times, but also on a regular basis. And even though they have been keeping up with the demand for the most part, it's been a real struggle for them, and that struggle continues. So we're just looking for a way to provide them additional funds to be able to buy more food from the Massachusetts Food Bank, to distribute to, to their clients. I don't know if the Suzanne sent me, or Suzanne or David, I'm not sure who emailed it to me, but there was just an article the other day about the Abington food pantry is looking for ham donations for the Christmas holiday. They don't think they're going to have enough hams to be able to distribute for all the requests they have for holiday dinners coming up this Christmas. So that's the sort of gaps that we're trying to fill with this funding.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the approval of the November 28th open session minutes. There was an amendment. Did we all have a chance to look at it over the minutes of November 28th?
Would they be approved?
Has an amendment.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the discussion of the town accountants' separation agreement. The agreement was released to the press last week. Does anybody have anything that...
John, why not send it at least?
Yeah, Kenny?
I'd like to see that posted on the website along, it says, "The contract's a full fit, this is part of the contract," basically, so.
That's fine.
That's all right with the board?
We don't have to vote on that, do we? No. All right, moving on. We have, let's see, vote to deficit spend on snow and ice. We need a motion to permit the town, this has been moved.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. The discussion on health care plan design change under the new legislation, that's been put off. John, would you care to elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are, we have sent notification out to all of the union membership pursuant to the new legislation for plan design that will result in the board voting at the, at the December 19th meeting to accept the provisions of Master of Law 32B subsections 21 through 23. That permits the town to establish a committee to look at plan design changes. We, the, the town, will be submitting to the PEI the plan designs that we intend to implement effective July 1st, and as well with that, a estimate of the cost savings realized through this new, new plan, design changes. Now, one of the issues that I would caution everybody on is that there is a certain, a fair amount of assumptions that are made in relationship to who's going to go to what plans. So we've made certain assumptions through the Mayflower Group, and I'll be seeking and getting updated information on that. We're using, at this point, FY 12 numbers, which are the current numbers we have in place for, for health care, until we know what those increases are. But there may be some deviation in what is actually saved based on, on what we're counting on at this point, and what we'll actually enroll based on the different plans that we're going to offer. So other than that, I just wanted everyone to be aware that this information went out. It was sent out last Friday. We are starting to get some of the green cards back. We anticipate taking that vote on, on Monday, the 19th of December.
Okay. Any other questions for John? All right. We have number four, the status update on library clerical, local 393, IBPO, IAFF, local 2080, and AFSA union contracts. That was a mistake, it should not be there, it belongs under executive session.
We will be discussing that in executive session, too.
Okay. Number five, a vote to deficit spend on snow and ice. Need a motion to permit the town to deficit spend in the snow and ice.
Yeah. How much, what was the, what was the proportion amount?
It's 100, it's 100,000. We filled the salt shed at, at approximately $32,000. We didn't fill it last year, which is what we usually do, because we had such a high percentage of over expenditure in that line item. We made a conscientious decision that when we had the FY 12 appropriation, we would fill the salt shed at that point. We made various repairs. As you know, last winter was a significant one in relationship to plow blades, work that needed to be done on, on the snowplow vehicles, and we also have made a decision as a result of the town's, this earlier decision to... And we also have made a decision, as a result of the town's earlier decision to not do sidewalk, snow removal during, with overtime money, that it forces us to either not get any of the snow removal activity completed. We have one workable system right now, and in order for us to do it in a timely manner, we need to have two. So we've allowed, under the snow and ice budget, for them to purchase a second sidewalk snow removal device, so that we would have two new devices working at the same time. We purchased one last year, because we had so much snow to remove. And we anticipate that if we have a snow event that is of significant accumulation, which we do anticipate at the end of December, that we're going to need to have two devices, because we're not going to be able to clear the school sidewalk routes without either using overtime, or if not using overtime, we need two devices to do it. And we, the board had voted not to incur overtime expenditure clearing sidewalks. So that's prompted us to look at purchasing that second device. And so that creates the deficit that we're currently in.
Isn't that kind of a backhanded way of, like, avoiding the capital plan? Has that been in the capital plan? I mean, rather than just saying, "It's a snow removal cause..." I don't know what problem with purchasing is, we need it, but isn't that just kind of, like, the town meeting doesn't know, you just say, "Okay, we appropriated a hundred thousand dollars for snow removal, you know, and we're going to use it." Not really, well, we're going to buy, use equipment that is actually supposed to be in the capital plan, I would think.
You're right. There's, it should be, you know, in the capital plan. We will bring it before the finance committee as a purchase that we're going to make using... At the time that we decided, the capital plan was in the fall town meeting, it was on, you know, the capital plan at that time. But we could not afford to pay for everything in that capital plan at that time. But the piece of equipment that we are now purchasing using snow and ice revenue or funding was on the capital plan. It was discussed, and it was something that did not move forward because of many of the competing interests of equipment that were, that was necessary and needed to be purchased at that time. But it wasn't, I would say, not discussed, and it wasn't, something that wasn't on the capital plan. It was, it was discussed, and it was decided that we, at that time, we had other items that were far more pressing.
I understand, but we talk about transparency all the time, and this is a perfect example. This isn't really very transparent. That's the point I'm just trying to make, that, you know, we talk a good game, but sometimes it just doesn't happen.
Just, a little bit on deficit spending, I can understand the snow and ice, but I didn't realize you could purchase equipment?
Well, we purchased equipment last year because we had no way of removing the snow from the sidewalks. We have a twenty-five-year-old piece of equipment.
No, I, I'm just, I'm a little bit perplexed, because you would seem like a better method would be to put it on the capital plan again, and have the capital plan reimburse the snow and ice, just to be perfectly clear. Snow and ice, in my book, is when you have your snowplows and vehicles going up and down the road, because we get a blizzard or something like that, we get into a deficit position.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have the equipment for this snowball.
Was it, so it was, it was an emergency situation? You needed the equipment?
Well, we consider it an emergency situation for two reasons. One is that we are not going to clear the sidewalks in a timely enough manner with one piece of equipment, so the kids could get to school. So we made a decision that we needed to purchase a second device. It was on the capital plan initially. If we follow your thought, which we could do, we'd have to wait till next year.
I don't know, it just seemed like you could make the argument up and down the thing for a new truck or a new plow or anything like that. That's what I kind of see with the problem.
How much was this snow sidewalk plow?
Same as the one last year, sixty grand.
Sixty grand. Now, would, there's no way they could reimburse the capital fund, could they?
Well, if you wanted to go to the special within the annual, appropriate sixty thousand to reimburse snow and ice, we could do that, have that discussion on town meeting.
Reimbursed, reimbursed capital?
Well, no, snow and ice. It came from snow and ice.
That's not the point, really. That's not really the point. The point is just that, you know, you vote a hundred thousand dollars at town meeting for snow removal, I don't think that the town meeting is thinking that we're buying new trucks and plows and things like that. They're using it to plow the streets.
But if you, if you needed it?
Absolutely, if you needed it, you did.
You needed it, but...
Okay, well, the bottom line is, at the end of the day, the conference decision was made. We've appropriated the money, we have basically eight thousand dollars left. So we ought to properly provide for snow plowing, so, I mean, one storm obviously is going to weigh over that, so...
Now, well...
You don't think we can cover the town for a grant?
I wish we could. So I'll make a motion that we allow the deficit spending of snow and ice.
Like that? Second?
Well, I kind of think you have to, that's the way it's been done in the year.
Well, the way the winter's going...
No, we don't have to, I mean, we could, we could not plow. That would be perfect.
You could put a limit on it.
You could put a limit on it, and then make sure if we're approaching that limit, it comes back to us again, just, you know...
Or change it to a snow, ice, and heavy equipment budget.
No, I think the way, probably, because you could have, between the next time we meet or something like that, you could have a couple of ice situations or a couple storms. It wouldn't be viable.
Well, I can tell you that whether you think it's appropriate or not, or whether you think it's transparent or not, and I've heard the comment of transparency from at least one member of the Board of Selectmen a couple of times. I think this administration has been far more transparent than any other administration to date. There is more information on the website, there is more information about what we're doing and how we're doing it, the manner in which we're doing it. This Board of Selectmen, not this board, but Boards of Selectmen over the past eight years, has spent more in contracts than we're spending in, and a piece of equipment that's going to benefit the majority of the residents of this community. And so, while I don't appreciate it, I understand your concern, but I do think that we have a right to spend money, budget it as appropriately as we can, to benefit the majority of the residents of this community. There were a lot of contracts that were signed over the years that benefited one individual, or those individuals.
Don't digress, let's stay on point.
So I'll leave it at that.
Hold on, we have a motion on the table. You never changed your motion. Do we have a second?
This is just, allow for deficit spending, right?
Allow for deficit spending on snow and ice. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. We have the town manager evaluation. Okay, the town manager evaluation is due beginning of the year. We have the same, we're going to use the same format that we did last year. It's a set of, it's basically a questionnaire, and all members have to fill the questionnaire out and have it back to me by the end of the year, and I'll summarize it. Any, if you have any ideas for future goals, they should be listed in the back in the comment section. Does anybody have any questions about the...
The town manager's contract also calls for each individual member of the board to sit with the town manager.
Okay.
That's personally evaluated.
Yep, you can...
That should be done prior to the first meeting in January.
Okay.
What's, what timeframe, Chris?
Prior to the first meeting in January.
Yeah, have these back by the end of the year, and then, go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask, if, so we, the way I understood it, and I think you had to just clarify it on me, is that we would fill it out, sit with John, I'll just review, I am, we sign, our individual one, he signs it, and then we pass it in? Or we just, and then it's synthesized? I don't know. Chris, yeah, the chairman's then synthesized.
Is it safe to assume that the board is going to have just one document at the end? That's what we, I think we agreed to.
Yeah.
Right, everything will be combined into one.
But if any, any members of the board would like to sit with you, they can just contact...
They're supposed to, by the contract.
That could be painful for any member of the board.
Contact you via email.
Sit and talk for a while.
I'm not sitting with them tonight.
Alright, does anyone else have any other questions on the evaluation procedure? No? No? Okay, we're going to move on. Annual license renewals. Hold on a second.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to do a license renewal tonight for Patty Joe's Po'boy Cafe. And they're looking to open up Mondays, on Monday holidays, from seven AM to one PM, no alcohol to be served. But I think the owners are here. Patty is really the owner, and Joe was just the...
He's the poor boy.
The cook, yeah, he's the poor boy in the back.
Did you bring any chambalaya?
Yeah.
If you, yeah, just state your name and your business.
My name's Art McKenna, I own Patty Joe's Po'boy Cafe at twelve oh nine Bedford Street in Abington. I'm here today because there's a couple of issues that I want to get answers to. One is, like, a Monday holiday, which, when I applied for my liquor beer and wine license, we were only open Wednesday to Sunday afternoon. So we're not covering Monday holidays, and we'd like to open for breakfast on Monday holidays. The second part of it is regular holidays, like Valentine's Day, which is one of the biggest days of the year for a restaurant. Last year it fell on Monday, we called Dory, and she said she had to call the ABC and then take a couple of months. I didn't have that much time, I decided not to open. This year, we're coming up, it's a Tuesday, and I'd like to open for Tuesday, Valentine's Day, with an extended, maybe two hours, just to ten o'clock on my beer and wine, so at least I can get two servants in at the restaurant on a special dinner menu Valentine's Day. Nobody goes out from three to eight on Valentine's Day. The second part of it is, I'd like to be able to do catering on Sunday night, Monday night, and Tuesday night, just until eight o'clock. If I had a party or a bereavement on a Monday or Tuesday, which are not my regular hours, but I don't want to be, most restaurants are open seven days a week. We decided not to, because there's only so many days of the week, you need to do a couple other things too, you know? And that's my issue.
Did we, did we have this summarized in writing? Did we, was there something?
No, no, actually, the only thing I have is a Monday holiday, on Mondays, when a holiday falls on a Monday, to open at seven AM to one.
Twelve o'clock. But I added more, and I'd like you to consider that.
Could I make a suggestion? On your application for renewal, you originally put in the number of hours.
Because the ABC, if I went Monday through Sunday, which I pay for seven days a week, they'd expect me to be open Monday through Sunday.
No, we open whenever we want, right?
Then it'd be a special permit, do I have to reapply, change my hours? I contacted the ABC, they contacted me, and they said it's up to you.
What I would say is that if you want to amend your application, I would suggest that you ask for the full week.
Full week.
And then it's up to you, we'll note, it's up to you when you want to open. Now, there are certain holidays that you can't open, you can't open...
I understand all the laws and all that.
As you understand the serving requirements, if you want to amend your application for a seven-day license, because you're paying for a seven-day license, I personally don't have a problem with that. The issue as it relates to your common victula, when you're open during the day, is not related to your liquor license. Your common victula license is a separate entity. Again, if you haven't, you could just amend your common victula, and we can take care of that question. The third question as it relates to catering, common victula is only the foods you serve at a sit-down. If you have tables and chairs, it's food you serve in the restaurant.
Yes.
If you're going to do catering, that's a separate license by the board.
I understand that, too.
So we...
Not catering, just to be able to do a limited dinner menu or bereavement in my restaurant, which my restaurant license covers.
That falls on the, falls on the common vic.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's not offside.
If...
You want to make a motion to amend his common vic for seven days a week?
Just a little confusion, I think what the gentleman is asking for on special occasions to be able to open up, not necessarily to increase all of your hours to that date.
Correct. Because, I mean, when I first did it, they said I had to call to get permission. Parties, they don't have that much time. They call you up, they say, "Can you do a party?" You say, "Wait, I got to get permission," they go someplace else, which is costing me lots of revenue.
Just adjust the whole...
Adjust the whole license.
The whole license. I see what you're saying, yeah, I'd support that.
There are some restaurants that have seven-day licenses, but they're closed Mondays. They have the option, if something comes available, to open on Monday. Same thing here, with the regular license, he has the option of opening, you know, if he wants to or not. His regular business hours are scheduled, if he has a special occasion, he goes on a Monday, and he says, "Well, gee, it's a holiday, it's on Valentine's Day," or, "I've got a party," or, "I want to do a special, you know, function." He has the ability to do it without, you're paying for it, you might as well benefit it.
So we wouldn't be able to do that tonight.
Why not?
We wouldn't be able to, I thought you had to have the application all filled out.
Well, as long as you amend the application.
Oh, you have it there?
Well, as long, if you vote the hours, we'll just amend the common vic to accommodate those hours and have you sign it.
Okay, fine. I was just going to say, we get it done before the first of the year, yeah, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, we have a meeting on the nineteenth.
We can do it tonight, we'll get it done.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Just a second.
What's the motion?
What are the hours?
I don't know the hours.
Seven, a seven-day long vic.
My regular hours close in time.
What do you want, what do you, I mean, in fairness, I don't think we can blindly go in there, I think we have to know what the hours are.
Well, I just, if you give them the option, if you do a seven-day license...
Which, what license are you talking about?
Common vic.
Going back to what I first said, the one and all.
So we're talking about two different, so...
Well, I just...
Right, I'm not disagreeing, I just think we need to be specific on what we're doing, which I think is better to Mike's point, because maybe we ought to wait until next week, so you can amend it and bring it back to us, and we know what...
If you're not sure, if you're not sure of the hours, I don't think...
The only, the only extra hours that I'd want would be a Valentine's, Valentine's Day for two-hour extra, other than that, no.
Alright.
It is a little confusing, you might, you know what, to Andy's point, maybe you should just come, bring it back in writing, and then we can vote.
Sit down with Mrs. Jameson prior to next week's meeting, and then we can put it on the agenda next week, and then we can know exactly what you need.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's a better...
And don't let that town manager talk to you about cooking anything.
Well, I'm not, I'm an amateur cook. He's a baker, yes.
You know, in the interest of their time, they are business people. We have to hopefully try and help business people.
Oh, yeah. But Kevin, we also, we also adopt policies here that we adopted, and things get missed and things get slipped through that shouldn't happen.
That's fine, I just don't want to have them come up another life.
Oh, they don't have to, they can put their license in, there's plenty of people whose licenses we are renewing tonight that aren't here.
We can do the same.
They're parked in the morning, they're parked at night. Yeah, okay.
That's it. Except for Valentine's Day, which...
No, no, we'll cover everything.
All right.
And before we go any further, it's Patty, as the Patty and Joe portion of this, it's her birthday tonight, so if you're listening and you happen to go down this week to the restaurant, just wish her a happy birthday, she's very pleasant.
Wish her a happy birthday tonight.
Happy birthday, Patty.
Okay.
We have a list of businesses.
You've got a list of businesses here that nobody sees, right? Somebody better be watching.
Okay. Are we all set with Patty Joe's?
I was.
I am.
I would be happy to make a motion if somebody would be along with us.
I will.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the Patty Joe's one-and-all beverage license to be open these seven days for the purposes and allow them the opportunity to decide which days they want to open.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No, I just would, again, I don't have a problem doing it like that, but I'd like to be consistent, I'd like to see the application filled out, and that's probably required from everybody else in town, and I think we should just be consistent. I still highly support it, don't get me wrong, it's just a matter of a little confusion. confusion that occurred and what we were doing.
But if you voted, we'll, we'll make the change in the application and you'll sign it next week.
Correct.
Like, like you would in any other application.
Yeah, once I see it out, I'd be okay with it.
All in favor of Kevin's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Whoa, three.
Aye.
Passes.
Okay, and then as far as your common victula license, I would move that we allow you, your new common victula license to be open the hours to which you would mention it.
Which are?
Eight days a week?
Seven days. Are we out of the seven days? Where are we on seven days?
Yeah, they are.
All right. It's not like we don't know the, what are the hours?
Somebody's, somebody's going home along.
7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, moving on. Moving on, happy birthday.
Second happy birthday.
Monday hours?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the hours? All in favor? Okay.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye. All right, the rest of these licenses, does anyone have any questions on any of these businesses? We had a couple right here, we have some of these, some of these on the list.
Can I, can I ask a question about this? Now, we have this spreadsheet, but then we have the fire chief telling us that some of the things on the spreadsheet are wrong, is that, is that the way it works?
I can elaborate on that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. If you're looking at the deputy fire chief, the first one is correct, Dalton's Garage, he wishes to forfeit his class two. The second one, Advantage, when it's gone out of business, it's actually in the midst of a transfer, so.
Okay.
The second one. And third, P N W Enterprises, it's the bond that's revoked, so we're working with the licensee now to, to get the new bond.
And, and any, any votes will be contingent on, it's all inspections and bonds being renewed by the end of the year.
Right.
Does anybody have any other questions on any other businesses besides these?
The building inspector also looked at every business and has no issues.
As far as the transfer goes, how does that work?
Well, this one, what, Advantage Auto Sales?
You would be renewing it tonight under its existing ownership, and then they would come before you again for a transfer, should they do that.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
How long was, we don't know how long, why, why did they say Advantage Auto Sales was out of business, it's been, it's vacant right now?
I don't think it's vacant. It's, we, we spoke to, actually to him today, and he said it wasn't vacant, that he's thinking of doing a transfer.
Okay.
The, I, I guess, from, from my perspective or from our perspective, I don't know how you wanna look at this, we have a situation where we have a bylaw that was voted on at town meeting that lowered the number of car dealerships to 25. Now, we're over that number, and I think that the board needs to consider how and when and if they, they wanna transfer licenses. The board makes those decisions and makes those determinations, you don't have to transfer licenses, because you, you, you are under a requirement to reduce the number of licenses to 25. That's a bylaw that was voted on back in 2007.
How many are there now, John?
I think there's 32.
Wow.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
So we can just pick names we don't like and then?
21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28.
Okay.
What are we, at 28? No, wait a minute. 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, I'm sorry, 33.
34.
34?
Is, is Advantage currently, I recognize the name, is the two licenses at that location?
Yes, two licenses, two, two separate businesses, two separate addresses.
Okay.
Does he have a bond for the, for, does Advantage Auto Sales have a bond?
Yup.
They do, so he has a bond for both Advantage and Midway?
Two separate ones.
He has two separate bonds?
Two separate everything, two separate bank accounts, two separate bonds.
You know, I, I saw a list, about a month ago, I looked at it, and I could've swore the address was different for Advantage Auto Sales. It was different from Midway.
Yeah, we spoke with him today because of the indication of it going out of business, and he said it is not, he's still, he's been operating them for 25 years, he is thinking of, of doing a transfer though.
Requesting a transfer.
Or he would be requesting a transfer.
He would be requesting a transfer.
So, so he doesn't, he never needed this license?
He, well, according to my discussion with Mr. Devaney today, he had indicated that he had a, a portion of his business was auction. You know, he sold cars and bought them from an auction and sold them, or did whatever, so he had one license for auction purposes, which I think you can use the same license for both. I don't know why that was the case, but anyway, that's, his explanation to me was that he had this second license for auction cars, where he would sell them for auction price.
Do we know, do we have, it doesn't say here, do we know the number of cars that's attached to these?
It's on their license, the number of cars.
Okay.
Do you want to know that in the future for all of them?
In the future, if, well, you know, my concern is, he has one business with two licenses, and if he transfers one, it's counteractive to the town's goal of reducing used car lots, or actually will be adding a car lot to the town. So, if he's, if he's transferring the, the license, he never needed it, or he's not, or he doesn't need it. And, you know, I, I wanna be consistent, because in, in the past couple of years since I've been here, we have not renewed licenses, because, because of.
Non-use.
Non-use, lack of use. So if this, you know, I would not have a problem combining the number of cars from these two licenses on one license, but I don't believe he should be able to transfer it, cause you'd be, actually be adding a car lot.
I, I think, you know, if the board was to take a position that a transfer was acceptable at the same location, but not at a different location, you're not necessarily creating an additional lot at a different location. But there, there are times in which, for example, if you're gonna.
Say that again, though?
If you look at transfers in, in, in the manner that if I'm, if I am the, the owner, if I, if I have the license and I am asking to, you know, transfer that to, from me to somebody else at the same address, that is not necessarily creating another dealership or another license.
And I wouldn't even have a problem if it was at a different address. My, my problem is, when I drive by, I see one, I see one business with one sign, but there's two licenses, that's the problem. And if he's only operating under one license, I don't feel that that second license, if a, if that second license was to be transferred, you'd be creating a used car lot, because in, in the town, the, the town's goal is to reduce them.
That's correct.
So, I, I wouldn't have a problem if it was a transfer, same address, different address, but, you know, just as long as we're not adding a business, cause if he transfers that second license, he's, he's still gonna be operating the same, he's not gonna be reducing business, correct?
Yeah, he has two separate licenses.
Yeah, but if he sells one, he's still gonna be doing the same amount of business.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
I think we should, you know what, for now, but maybe, maybe for bookkeeping purposes, maybe just pass them tonight, but that at some point, maybe have Mr. Devaney in here.
Well, there's also, the suggestion could also be that, that you hold off on, on this and, until you, you have him in next week, if you'd like, to discuss this second license. It, it is something that I think.
Let's hold that one out.
Yeah, you don't have to, you, you could hold that one out, you can hold any of them out that you want, and, and have them in, and I think that that would be preferable than to pass it.
You know, you know, we're not, like I said, I would be more, I would be very in favor of combining the amount of cars on each license to one license. Now, we, we don't wanna hurt this guy's business, we, we want him to be successful, I just, I don't think he should be able to transfer a license or pocket this license, cause that's in essence what I believe it is, a pocket license, and we don't have pocket licenses.
Yeah, the, the bylaw clearly states that you can't have a pocket license.
And that this is a pocket license.
If he's not using.
If he's not using it, that's why.
Because he needs those number of cars that both these licenses call for.
You know what, if, if, if he's, then we can just combine, combine the amount.
Why don't we have him come in, ask him to come in at least?
Okay, I, I mean, I have no problem doing whatever the board wants, wants to do.
Okay, with that said, I would.
Just connect, just a couple of things now. On, on a license, Chris, although I, again, I'd like to be consistent, I'd like to see that, that the area you're talking about would support the number of increased vehicles, sounds like, are they adjacent properties or?
Well, it says right here, they're the same address, 411 Broughton Ave.
Okay, but on some of these other situations, I had a gentleman call me about, you know, the fact that he's, he had a tenant that, that actually turned in his license, and he was landlord, and actually it was, it was a piece of property that was made up to sell because the tenant sold him the property, now he's lost that ability to rent that.
The license goes with the business, not the property.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I, I thought, you know, like the same thing, if you hear the story, that it was, you know, kinda what happened, and, and reflecting on my limited time on this thing, and we had a couple hearings on car lots that weren't being used, and probably my question is, how do I know that any one of these that I'm about to vote on?
We don't.
We don't, and, and, so we have inspectional, okay, we have inspectional services in this town, and, and, and to be honest with you, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if I knew, because I've known there's been businesses in this town that basically looked like they were shot it up and all of a sudden came back, you know, with cars and stuff, and, and at some point we're saying to, some people know you can't do this, and to other people, so, again, I'm a little bit, I, I don't know, I guess I'd have to get in and spend more time driving around, but I, I don't know if we have a zoning officer, or somebody can tell these businesses are actually in businesses, are they, you know, are they, they up to snuff, are they, are they, the number of vehicles there appropriate, close?
Yeah, I met with the building inspector today, he's inspected them all.
Okay.
And he had no issues with them.
Okay.
But then again, I mean, if the board has a concern, we can express that to the, the building inspector, and he can go out and do an inspection, based on the specific concern that you have.
But as of right now, he's inspected all these?
He's inspected them all, and they meet the requirements of the statute, according to the building department.
Okay.
And, and there, there's also.
If, if, if you have a current license, and they've submitted all the appropriate applications, and it's a preferential measure at that point, you renew it. If you have a question on a specific one, then you have to have a notice to show cause and have a hearing as to why you want to revoke that license, but you just can't simply say you're not gonna renew it if they've submitted all the paperwork. So, if there's a specific item after the fact, and I know it sounds foolish, but that's, I understand that, in a specifically with liquor licenses, if you find an issue, you renew it, and then you have a notice to show cause as to why the license shouldn't be revoked at that stage of the time, and then they have the opportunity to present what this is, and, you know, you hear testimony, and you make a decision on the fact, but you just can't not renew somebody if they've submitted all the appropriate applications.
Okay, well, is, is there any other questions?
I'd like to make one comment too, cause we talked about two licenses, the same addresses, another example down here, 485 Center Ave has two, it's not the same owner, but it is the same address for two different businesses.
That doesn't mean anything, cause it could be a strip mall or something with them.
Okay.
Where is that?
Which businesses are you talking about?
485 Center Ave.
48.
New England Crash Center.
What's the name of the business?
Platinum Auto Care.
Oh, yeah, that just came before us or something. There was just a transfer of that. Was that, is that Damon's? The old Damon?
No, 485 Center, no.
No, 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 but Platinum Auto Care, that just, they were just before us.
They did do a transfer. Yup, you're right, they were, that you, you did a transfer like, maybe a couple of months ago.
That's a very good, that's a very good point.
But there's, there are two locations, that New England Crash Center and Platinum.
But you can't have two licenses at the same address, by statute. You can't have two, add, two licenses at the same address.
You cannot.
On the forms, is it maybe you?
On any, by statute.
Apartment one, apartment two, maybe, I don't know, or suite one, suite two, if it's a business condo or something?
Two different owners too.
Right. Maybe we don't wanna hold those back.
I mean, council could speak on that matter, but I know that he's not here for that, but I don't think you can have two class two license holders at the same address.
And just the.
Are you sure that?
Yeah.
I believe you may be correct, Mr. Town Manager, I think though, wasn't there a request for opinion on that issue?
Yeah.
Give me one, so I can see if I can check my notes.
I think it was if somebody could have two licenses, and I think the answer was yes.
Was it from Brian Riley, is that who responded back?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think they could have two licenses at, at.
Listen, get short of.
Okay.
Just a question, I, I do have a working relationship with a lot of these businesses, I think at that point, I probably, I don't know, public disclosure law is top.
Are any of them relatives?
Public disclosure law, I don't, no, I mean, I, I just.
I have one on here, I have to.
Well, you know what, I'm just gonna recuse myself from the whole process, it'd be easier, instead of sitting here saying I'm gonna skip this one and that one.
How about on the class one and two?
Can you take them all, but borderland?
Yeah. Do you, what do you wanna do with Advantage?
Who do you wanna hold, do you wanna hold anybody?
Have them in, or would you prefer to hold them out till next week? You'll call.
Um, well, you know what, why don't we hold them off until next week?
All right.
Okay.
Which, two or four?
So, based on, I move we remove the class one and two licenses, the chairman has requested Advantage Auto and Midway be exempted from the vote, and Selecta Bourbon has requested Borderland to be exempted from the vote, so my motion is to renew all others on the list, page one and two.
Contingent on all inspections and, and bonds being of the date. Okay, second.
Kevin, could you repeat the names of the exemption ones?
Midway?
Okay, I'm sorry.
And Advantage?
Advantage and Borderland?
Borderland, but they're gonna take Borderland up, I represent Borderland, so that's,